I will call the workshop about October 18th. We have to, uh, to work and I will add.
Thank you.
And we're here with very adjustments to the agenda.
No, Madam Chair.
All right, may I have a motion to approve this? May they do their second please, on paper. Okay, all right, first on the agenda, we welcome Dave Arness. If you had a question.
Okay. Well, next, we found the location of the new Justice Center. I think that here it is, uh, which is going up to, uh, West Fort Hill. I've got some comments on that. It's a, it's actually congested area. There's two roads at the west one, the five-point road and West Fort Hill Road. They're very narrow roads, they're two-lane roads and they've got some curves on them. Fort Hill Road has significant elevation. And presently, those roads now are already shared by, uh, the existing government buildings, the Senior Center, the Graham Transit, the 9/11 Center, and the EMS building are all there. In addition to that, Duke Power has got the high voltage transformer station there. There's about thirty properties that are further along up on Fort Hill, but they have to go on that road anyway, private residences and properties, about thirty accounted for that. There's also the two churches there, Methodist Church, which not only has services on the regular day, but that's shared, their facilities are shared by many civic groups that use their fellowship halls and their meetings, so it's quite busy out there in the evenings, certainly after the evenings. And the Liberty Mission Church is the base for the, uh, manner of food distribution. And when they, when they're doing that food distribution, it's extremely messy. They apparently last time, one time they did, they had the police go down there and direct traffic, because there's just so many people in there to get advantage of the food distribution. The five-point road, of course, is, is, that's the bypass almost from, from the county. You get the true traffic from Sweetwater Road and into, to Lurva, I'd say. There's a funeral home there, there's a lot of traffic in funeral home at times. Cemetery traffic, and there's also some residents that are on that road too. The, uh, the plan to move the Justice Center over there would add, uh, the local courts, administration offices, sheriff's department, and the Graham County detention center. This would really add to the congestion, the traffic heading through there. The sheriff's department, of course, would need to have emergency, if they were to have to respond to an emergency, that means they could go through there as well as the EMS as well, like, they could have emergency needs and have all the roads cleared. I've heard some concerns from the elderly citizens, and they're concerned that putting the courthouse up there might bring some undesirable people into that area, either detainees or, or defendants or whatever, and there's some concern there that they, uh, for their sake, to be done with that type of person that might be in there. Also, I'm sure you're going to have to provide some kind of food service, you talked to quite a few employees up there, and it's not reasonable to expect them to drive into the town every day for lunch or whatever, especially not below that. So I think probably you're going to have to have some kind of food service there or restaurant or something there. That's going to increase traffic again by the restaurant employees and food trucks can service the restaurant. And of course, they do need a tremendous amount of parking spaces up there. Now, don't just imagine the chaos if, if, for instance, the police had to respond to an emergency when there was a funeral procession progress, that would be significant chaos The road itself is very narrow, steep, winding, and extremely dangerous during winter weather. You wouldn't be very much faster of snow on that road, uh, tapping, sliding off the road, and, and maybe sliding into other vehicles. And there's other concerns, you probably may have already, uh, fully investigated those, and I think you had Duke Power, high voltage transformer station. I don't know what the long-term effects, health effects would be for, like, the exposure to that, um, electrostatic radiation. Maybe no problem at all, I don't know, but it's above, the electric equipment, I'm confident there could be significant emissions there. There could be a hazard in the event of a transformer failure. When they fail, it can sometimes be a catastrophic failure. When one fails, it may be causing explosion. And the possible interference with wireless communication, I don't know whether that electromagnetic radiation would interfere with wireless cell phone service in the area. I would imagine it probably, if it would. And there's possibility, there might be unmarked Indian burial sites in that area. I don't know, but I've worked with several different people, and I believe there is or there could be, and actually, one government, they did find a buried body up there, farmer found one, and I think that was investigated by the state. I don't know whether they determined whether it was an Indian or what, I've no idea. That, that would be something you need to be really aware of before you start the construction of that. Now, everyone knows the present courthouse is not adequate. And I'm suggesting that the new Justice Center is the downtown, a location which would be just north of the present building. This property that Brenda, uh, and myself own, about three acres of property there, right on the courthouse square, between courthouse square and Ford Street. And it seems like you might be looking at, considering building the Justice Center there with access from, from Court Street, uh, for minimum traffic, but, and access, of course, from Ford Street for other. It's supposed to have access to be, uh, from the courthouse square. It's very congested up there right now, especially on Court Street with the vehicles, and the police department there, and the jail, and what else, it's very, very congested. I'm saying, suggesting that we take most of that access, and access to the new building from Ford Street, that would allow then, those parking, available parking spots to be used more for people attending local businesses, going to local businesses rather than, uh, being courthouse, courthouse business. Justice Center would contain the courthouses, and associated administrative offices, a jury room, sheriff's department, detention center, and probably the court office, I would imagine, would move, uh, from the courthouse to the new Justice Center, because these need to be close to the courthouse office. Access to the, the, for Justice Center from Ford Street, you could come in from Ford Street from two different, different ends, so you have a little more options than you have than a single, uh, two-lane road that you have over at Fort, Fort Hill. You wouldn't have to worry about conflict between EMS emergency, a police emergency, because the EMS building would remain in Fort Hill. Senior Center, Graham County Transit, and the 9/11 Center, they would all remain where they are. The existing courthouse could be used for additional, rather than leaving it empty, additional, or other government agencies could go in there, the registered Ds could stay there, uh, possibly the Graham County Board, Board of Elections Office, and tax offices could remain or be in, in the old courthouse building. And, uh, very close access between the two, beneficial for, for the business. There's a, uh, it would be a short walk across the, uh, the bridge and the anthill to the old courthouse. And if you wanted to leave it, that could be a covered walkway, or if you wanted to do it, you could meet me in a tunnel, I believe, so there'd be no reason for judges or anybody else to, if you needed, you have anybody going from the old courthouse to the new Justice Center, so you can go outside. And parking, you could have cover parking, or even underground parking underneath the, the Justice Center, access to Fort Street. There's an eight-inch sewer line running in that area that could be bridged over, or it may even be ideal to, to service the courthouse building, the new Justice Center itself, where I don't know if it's adequate sewage lines over West Fort Hill, let my say, running another line differently. Available, probably run out of about three acres of land. It's got a hotel office and a couple of empty buildings on it. I have a property up for sale. I'm getting a little too old for running a hotel. And there's also a cross Ford Street, on the other side of Ford Street there is actually a, the old railroad railway, which is a sixty-foot wide strip through there, which can only be used for public purposes. And for the D, it likely provides you additional parking or whatever, certain additional support space you might need or whatever for the, uh, the Justice Center. And I have a sketch, okay, it's just sort of, in the bottom portions, I couldn't get a better picture. This is courthouse square, and here, and there, a hundred, a hundred-foot railway, a hundred-foot space, open space between buildings, uh, at the edge, and that, plenty of room there to provide access to, like, a Justice Center building or whatever else you need to have It's been a very crude sketch, showing a section elevation here, where the courthouse is here, uh, the building, new building would need to be set back far enough it would interfere with the existing, uh, foundations or, or the existing support wall there, and then it could be a bridge over there for possession. You could bring in Ford, traffic from underneath the building, building underneath for parking, underground parking, and sheriff's department could come right in there with, right into the jail, uh, and then the elevators up to, up before for the administration area. I just put a square, I don't want to deal with that square, is it right size, wrong size, I'm sure it's wrong size.
Thank you, Mary. Any of the board members have any comments or questions for Mr. Arness? Manager Corina?
I don't. Do you have anything else you want to provide?
No, no, just, that's about it. I've got, I'm, this is just put together, I haven't done any detail, look at anything, obviously.
Good question. It's a great presentation, very informational. Thank you for that, appreciate that.
Uh, Clark, I ask Officer, either of you?
All of them.
Out of any time?
It's pretty self-explanatory, like, I would, uh, I would add that there is one more church, and that's the old mother church up there there.
That's right. Is that attended regularly?
Pardon? Yes, they do.
That is it? I know they've done renovation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Arness, appreciate that. We'll, uh, we'll move on here, try to go through this, we have a few minutes, try to So, this was the presentation put together, um, by the NCACC, it was provided in Southwestern Commission Council, a government's meeting, and it goes over a lot of things that's happened over a period of time, as we know with opioid settlement, how things kind of started, where it came from, and where we're going. So we'll, we'll run through a few things real quick, we've got a few minutes here before we start the regular session. As we know, the human toll that it, that it took, the opioid epidemic took on the nation, and then also on North Carolinas, I'm sure there's somebody in this room that's been affected in many ways by the opioid problem. And now, a new wave, COVID-19, a new wave of isolation and despair, could be another jumping forward for this to happen again, and to start with those, uh, overnight overdoses and medication, self-medication. As we know, the role of local governments, we're on the front lines, we handle that, we're looking at our citizens, would we provide health services for our citizens? And local governments have spent, it would be hard to put a dollar figure on what we've provided and what we've spent, and the toll it's taking on our citizens, uh, from, with those opioid-related costs. State of North Carolina, this is a little bit of the litigation overview, seventy-six counties have filed litigation, and eight municipalities, there's a list down there below that goes over those municipalities, I won't go into them. We're not entered into litigation, but we have signed on, uh, from the beginning to be part of that, as you know, we are receiving funds from that. Little bit of the distribution, um, there's some district distributors, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, as you know, National was twenty-six billion over eighteen years, North Carolina, seven-hundred-and-fifty million over eighteen years, I think we average about seventy-seven, that's a seventy-seven thousand.
It's, first year's going to be about a hundred and twelve or fourteen, and then we'll settle back to the high seventies.
Yeah, it'll average out for that again. Front-loaded in early years, and new rules to prevent future harm. So here's NCACC's role of the settlement talks, who we work closely with in many ways, we have a very good relationship with the NCACC. This is a little bit about, what we've discussed a little bit, breaks down how we got there, um, and where we're at, the five-five committee, and we know a little bit about that. Can't really see real good, but our very own star is right here, Ms. Becky, part of the five-five committee, and they help make those things happen.
And I would say that Becky really, one of the stars of that team right there, and it's well-known and intended by the rest of the team, that the entire county, uh, North Carolina, so should the county commissioners, Becky was the person who actually held ground with, uh, the Attorney General, and provided a reason that all of these funds didn't go, did not go directly to the state of North Carolina, but are being distributed, um, for the candidates who are in the public, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Here's a, yeah, yeah, very, very good, very good. A little bit about, and I learned a little bit more about this from this presentation, which I thought was great, initially, they wanted to just give the money to the states and let the state government allocate, which we all know that would have been a mistake, it would have been fallen under the, the political side, and it could have been leveraged in different ways and not got out equally, so this five-five committee, five-five five committee helped do that, and that's why you see...
Remember the lawyer's card?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I used that as an example, sorry, I used that as the example.
I'd like to acknowledge that's an excellent...
The fifteen, so, the way they, you had lawyers and representatives that really thought this out, the way they distributed and how it allocated was fifteen percent to the state and eighty percent to the local governments, which is great, and then five percent to the county and state. And that, that provides that ability to be able to do the, with it, what we need to help the citizens out here that are battling, and, and even get services out there to help them as well. There's also potentially, and correct me if I'm wrong from what I'm learning, there's still a potential, we have some more money coming from Purdue Farm, which has not been settled yet, but there's a potential for more money for North Carolina, and it lists a year as eight-hundred-and-fifty million, so that's, that's out there, and there's a potential to be, to be blessed with a little bit more money to go for, and that would be over the course of eighteen years as well. You have some options here when you go into the memorandum of agreement, opioid mediation activities, you have option A, which is a local government may fund one or more strategies from short-listed, evidence-based, high-impact strategies to address the epidemic. And then option B, a local government may fund one or more strategies from longer-listed strategies, after engaging a collaborative strategic planning process involving a diverse array of stakeholders at the local level. I do know that they started the planning, and there is a meeting coming up, I think, tomorrow to discuss this at nine o'clock. So they're starting to look into these, getting the players involved, Southwestern Commission, try to see which one of these options might be best for Graham County. That's a good opportunity for us, at the end of the day, I think we, we will have representation at the table in the form of probably, Chair, Chair Howard's planning to be there, I don't know that I've got to be on the call, but, uh, I think Ms. Becky will be on that call as well, so we'll have representation, and we'll moderately monitoring this going forward, certainly for the foreseeable future. And here's some, uh, North Carolina use of funds, overview, collaborative strategic planning, which we talked about, happening tomorrow, evidence-based addiction treatment, recovery support, harm reduction strategies, and the justice system strategies, which is available in the meeting, and to be able to use those programs, to be available to help those who are in recovery, and to also help harm, and you work with the Justice Center system to get them into those recovery-based programs, try to keep them out of trouble going forward. North Carolina use of funds, option A strategy, the evidence-based addiction treatment. Support evidence-based addiction treatment, consistent with the American Society of Addiction Medicine's National Practice Guidelines for Treatment of Opioid Use Disorder, including medication-assisted treatment. So they'll partner with these organizations to help work with that, those, those people that, and it's, and it's support and evidence-based, so there is positive and more, and things that work with it out there. North Carolina use of funds continued, peer support, which we have, which is working, is successful here in, with, you know, we have the sheriff's office and the health department, recovering housing, which we hope to work on, may have some ideas about recovery housing in our area. And as you know, Graham County is a, is a supporter of that, and we have employed those that have come out of the system, and I have to say that it's, it's a success. We are, we're offering employment where we can to help those folks. Harm reduction, so we have service programs, uh, different distributions. You have, like we talked about, justice center strategies, diversion programs, treatment for incarcerated people, uh, re-entry programs, which is important, which is what we help with. Here is some, if you take a picture of that slide, this is more information, if you want to, we can give, I can hand out the, uh, this, each one of you have a, a slide, providing copies via email and hard copy, so there, you have the information that you can get here. Here's some of the foundation partners, state-level resources for local governments, you have the Dogwood Health Trust, Duke Power, Luke Cross Mission Foundation, the Gentry Foundation, and the North Carolina Institute of Medicine. As we mentioned earlier, coordination group, we're five local government representatives, five experts appointed by the NCVHHS, one expert appointed by Attorney General, two experts appointed by legislative leaders. So also will be transparency and reporting, annual financial and impact reporting and audit requirements, which we kind of get used to with a lot of grants that we do, the statewide opioid settlement dashboard, I'm sure there'll be a very useful website out there to use. We'll move into the, real quickly, the next steps, we'll be pivoting from settlement talks to planning for the future. These are our strong partners, as you know, NCACC, the North Carolina Department of Justice, North Carolina League of Municipalities, and Department of Health and Human Services. This is, this is a plus for us too, knowing and talking a lot with Southwestern Commission, we need a lot of help, we don't have a lot of staff here to be able to dedicate to a lot of these things. So NCACC will be staffing assistance with strategic planning, grant-based funding to support this effort, ARPA project coordinators does assist these counties, so that's good news for us. This is, uh, things to consider going forward, this is an eighteen-year settlement, invest in the beginning, take your time to plan, build in flexibility, and consider long-lasting oversight. This is basically a step-by-step breaking down the opioid, opioid settlement MOA that we've discussed. And here are, Kevin Litter was, uh, really great in providing this to us, did a really good job, I'm only trying to regurgitate what I can, from what I heard, he did a better job than I did, really good, very informative, I appreciate them for putting this out, some other contacts there, and we'll open it up for your questions or discussions regarding opioid settlement.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
And, um, the NCACC put that together to kind of help guide all the, all the counties in its collaborative, uh, efforts, rather than each county piecemealing and giving what's the best direction, direction to go, we have to work together, uh, in order to establish, uh, best practices, as we go along, uh, as all you know, this is, uh, this is our first, uh, shot, and hopefully with, um, funding, and what we do with it is critically important for our most needy population, for our families, our community, and our young people.
Very good, very good. I'm glad we were able to provide that, and we've got a minute here before we go into regular, so please, anybody that has any questions or anything they want to discuss, by all means, come by the office, and we will provide any information that we can.
All right, on the call, uh, Graham County Board of Commissioners meeting for October 18th, 2022, two quarters, members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby, are due, under the state government, as it acts to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of such conflict, and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter of terms before the Board of County Commissioners, with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict.
Good day, Father, and we're just so thankful for everything that you do for us, especially the gifts and the opportunities and the blessings that you've served us. Father, we ask that you just lead us and guide us with our thoughts and our directions that we need to have. And Father, most of all, this led us here, bitching every morning, our county, and most of all, Father, we just reach out to you, asking that you just continue just to bless us, and just protect us, and most of all, just touch and heal those who are sick and ill, and I can't. And Father, we're just so thankful for everything that you do, in your precious and holy name, we just pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And I would say that we did have a couple amendments that came in late yesterday, I did fix it and send it to the sunshine list, so we have, I think, one item under your own business that is correct as of now.
Yeah, everything's up today, we'll talk in under any...
Okay, uh, entertaining questions, can I bring the agenda please? Is there a second? All right, we have, uh, minutes for approval, uh, regular, uh, meeting, minutes for September the twentieth, the emergency, uh, meeting of October the seventh, if there are issues to improve these minutes. One more second. Okay, all in favor? Minutes approved. Okay, we will welcome... And we would welcome Scotty, thank you all for coming, and last, Bonnie G. Rice.
You ready for Bonnie Rice now?
Yeah.
If y'all could speak up a little bit, she's a little bit hard to hear.
And take the mic. Just give her on in that mic, we can hear you, okay?
I have a chair, commissioners, and everyone here, they need to speak. I have been coming to Grand County for 12 years, come from Florida and several places before that, maybe 35 years in my life, had horses for over 40 of those years. And my daughter and I were lucky enough to live in a small town when she was growing up in Florida, and they had opportunity to have a very small rodeo ground in the rural community. A gentleman set aside about 50 acres of his property, just so the kids in the country would have a place to go. My daughter, because we moved so much, was a very quiet child, introverted, and when we started into the horse sports, she became friends with so many people. She enjoyed learning about horses, till then she was afraid. She learned good horsemanship, going to pony clubs, made lots of friends, learned responsibility. It made my life as a mother much easier. She and I did all these things together, even in high school, we rodeoed together. Before that, we did hunter jumper. After that, we did endurance riding. We did a little bit of everything, most often riding with our friends in the forest. It occupied most of our time outside of work for me, outside of school for her, all summer. We benefited so much. When I came here, and I love it here, I mean, I can't tell you how much I love this community. When I came here, and of course I've lived in big cities, small cities, places where there's a lot going on, some places where there isn't so much. Some places I saw where people just moved forward to make things happen. When I came here, I saw that there might be a need for something to happen, to occupy young people and families, to bond them, bring them together. But I didn't know how I might be able to step in and do a thing. Every year I come up, and I love it here, and I just saw that there was some need, I don't have the wherewithal to bring an industry here, but I have a background in horses. I worked for lawyers for about 45 years altogether. I helped them back on in business. I kept thinking I should know something, but it seemed like there was nothing I could draw upon. And this year, when I came up, I was told that there was going to be a rodeo. I was like really excited, and then it took a while for that to look like it was going to progress to fruition, but it did. 1,500 people came to that rodeo. I was there both nights, and I saw the faces of children, elderly, families, everybody had a good time there. I saw what Chase Lancaster had to go through on his own most of that time getting it ready, and he prepared that arena, and by the time everybody got there, they had no idea how much work he had gone into to get that done, that I knew. After he was successful, I called him and I congratulated him, and I said, "How did you get that land? How did you do that?" And he said, "It was a gentleman by the name of Dirk Cody." I said, "Could I have his homework?" And it was like God budge me, bing, get going, "Boy, you can do something. Go talk to this gentleman." So I did, and he was very gracious and listened sincerely. And for an hour, I said, "I have this dream, I've got all this background, I've seen so much, I've even worked on divorce farms, and I've seen events done, and I've been part of those, and I feel like I have a well-rounded gift to offer there, but I don't know how to go about making it happen." So we talked, I said, "How about that arena that Chase Lancaster set aside for our rodeo? Could talk into maybe working with me on the arena?" And he said, "Yeah, I think that's a good idea." I said, "It's like it would benefit children and youth and families to have a place to go that's wholesome and safe within minutes of their home." Because so many of my friends here who are horse people, they go to Sweetwater, Tennessee, Larisville, Georgia, Waynesville, North Carolina, Bryson City, even to Asheville. And if we could have something here within minutes from their home, that gas that they're paying, eating out, benefiting other communities where they go, could benefit us here. So we discussed that, he said he was in full support, and that I probably would need to come and talk to the county to see if you would be willing to work with him and with us, our little salad club that is just formed, we're a nonprofit, just getting underway. And, you know, so that is my request, but I also want to tell you that in the meantime, so many people I've spoken with are so in support. We talked to Benny Orr, he has volunteered his equipment and his manpower to clear that land. I'm told by several others who have been on that arena, maybe three decades ago, there was an arena there, and they had poured blood, sweat, and tears and money into setting that up, and they did a fine job. But I don't know how that fell behind, I have no idea what happened there, but I was told that there's still the sand there where that arena was, and that that can be maintained, and that's valued to begin with, bringing the sand. So we thought, well, when we're clearing that land, we'll be very extra careful around that sand to preserve it, and whatever more we need to add to make a nice arena ground, because the ground matters. Running horses, you can break legs on horses. So it matters, even something that's simple that is still there, it's not much, but there's great value in that. So we discussed that, and the other things, I mean, it was just like, things were just pouring into my head with ideas. Children, I know there's some children, maybe many, that have never sat on a horse, don't own a horse, but we could offer riding lessons. I know that, you know, Double Lot Farm does that too, but there's room for others here in the county, and we can all work together also, but it's like, there's so much, we've got barrel racing, we've got one family here that's going to barrel racing over in Larisville, Georgia, almost every week. I think they spend, they can spend between $125 and $200 for entry fees every time, just two or three people in that family, because they not only enter one event, but they enter several, and it adds up, and that's just one thing, it might be 50 to 100 people at these events. If you do the math, you see that the money comes back. I also spoke with Swain County, they have just built an arena. The county had the land, I don't know if it was donated, if they purchased, I do not know that story, but they did a grant with the North Carolina Tobacco Fund, Vapo Trust.
Code Green.
Yes. And they gave them $130,000. The building, the structure itself was 250 plus, and that money came from donations, sponsorships, just giving people, maybe some people are not even saying who they were or doing, and they filled that up. That was, I think they started their discussion on, it was 2017, the grant was done in 2020, and in 2022, sometime between May and July of this year, it is up and going, it has events going all the time. It is an event park, it's not just an equestrian arena. And they are open to doing anything, music festivals and speaker, and you name it. Because FFA is coming into the county of the high school this coming fall. Nikki Stewart will be the ag agent, and she shared that with me, that she's bringing in FFA, Future Partners of America. They show steers, any other livestock, they will need an arena. The high school will have to probably ask you for an arena, and kind of like asking in advance on their behalf. If we have one valley, there it is, there's the arena for the high school. There's several events that could be done there besides equestrian events, I mean, there's so many equestrian events, but probably one of my favorites, probably the one that warms my heart the most, when I did work in Florida part-time for a very large equine facility, we had therapeutic riding academy come from O'Callaghan, which was north of us by 30 miles, and they would come down to our large arena there and bring their horses, their special easy-grooming horses, children in wheelchairs, autistic children. They also serve veterans and law enforcement post-traumatic stress. They also serve abused women and children. I was part of that program whenever they came down, and I think it was probably one of the greatest things I've ever been involved in. I would love to see that here. I know it takes certification, I read that it takes a physical therapist to oversee the program, a physical therapist with at least three years of professional experience to get that certification to do that, but I'm willing to do anything to get that kind of a program. I'm kind of like a downhill train with no brakes when I'm passionate about something. There is another thing I would love to see happen here, it happens in the eastern portion of the state. It's the North Carolina High School and Junior High School Rodeo, and they compete, and the competitors are able to get scholarships to various colleges, just competing in rodeos, specifically aimed at young people. Well, that program stops in Asheville. I'm wanting to communicate with them and get them to move a little bit further west all the way here. We have an arena between us and Asheville, we would have Waynesville, now Bryson City, and now Robbinsville. And if you have, I believe, at least four arenas between a major center like Asheville, maybe they would allow us to use Asheville, they'd use it for the east and maybe the west I think that, I think that could happen. So, you know, and the other thing is, is this arena can be so many things, it doesn't have to be just horses. It could be the first Grand County Fairgrounds. I mean, think about that. I mean, that's just, that's big. Every county has a fairgrounds, almost every county. And, you know, we could have just immense things going on there. It just could be a community hub, and I know we have D.O.S.G.A.P., that's wonderful, I know that's a wonderful revenue, but it's not for children and families, I mean, it's bringing people here, and I love it myself, there are mothers there. But I think this is just so grounded and so wholesome, I do, and I'm willing to do anything to make it happen. I don't know how convincing I can be, especially if you're not rural and agricultural people, but we could also be fundraising trail rides to help ourselves, you know, to help our little salad club, plus we could do fundraising charities for other charities. I'd like to see a drill team, I'd like to see a search and rescue team. I mean, there's so many things we could do. I mean, these places that have arenas are busy all the time, and they're non-stop. If you want to just get a little whiff of it, is go down to Larisville, Georgia, or go over to this new one in Bryson City, Great Smoky Mountain Event Park, it's called, and just see how they're just movers and shakers, they're constantly filled on the calendar. I see when we go to Larisville to some of these shows, when I go to see my friends there, horse trailer, after horse day, after horse trailer, sometimes from different states, just finally in the town, they're eating, they're buying gas, they're buying clothes, they're not just coming in and leaving. And I just see, I see revenue and I see benefit to families. Okay, how many are here for support of the salad club arena? Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you very much, everybody. With that, the board, Becky, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few questions.
Great. Ms. Connie, would you come back to the microphone, please?
This arena in Swain County, do you have any idea how big it is?
It's 200 by 110.
200 by 110?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea on how much property y'all need to satisfy your...
Well, that whole place up there is five acres, this was the Inspiration Park with the Inspiration brand, that's a five-acre block up there.
Okay.
It doesn't require that much, but it's nice for having horse trailer.
Right, okay. Would a builder like this satisfy your need?
That's a nice size, yes, it is.
Something similar to that? Maybe I heard of it coming, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I was going to call you tomorrow.
That's all right.
Do you think we could figure something out, or at least get a path forward?
Yes, I think we could. Rob Hawke, he's my counterpart over in Swain, and he's partly responsible for getting the facility that they've got over there, and I think he could probably tell us a lot about what we need to know about doing it, but I would love to see. I've judged the Macon County Fair for the last about 20 years, I think I've missed two years and 20 years, and they've got, it's probably not five acres, it's probably three or four, and they've got a lot of stuff in a small area that's really cool for their county, and it's not just animals, it's horticultural products, flowers, fruit products, all kinds of stuff, in addition to animals, that's, it draws thousands of people every year, and it's, I would love to see something like that here. And we can talk about it, and anything you think I can do to help you, you know, we'll do it.
Well, I think it's a great idea, especially with the multi-use aspect of it, and typically place it to the board, I'd like to, I'd like to put a knee together and see what we can do.
I like that idea. I would ask you what your thoughts are, please?
Well, I used to ride, about 30 years ago, we used to have a place at XDR Shop at First Grids, a lot of y'all knew him, we rode in different competitions, different places, and we were competing, which I lived my dad's back in, and that's where we competed all over, and then all of a sudden it just kind of went away. And I'm kind of objective, I think it'd be a great thing to have, a great opportunity to be able to bring something back for our kids to be able to learn how to ride, how to take care of horses. for our kids to be able to learn how to ride and how to take care of horses. I'm a volunteer.
Hey, for me, thank you very much, Bonnie. And thank you once again for all of you coming. Anything that we can bring into Graham County to service our citizens and especially our young folks who are just hungry for a place to be and things to do. And it's a huge burden for me that we have so few things for our kids to do here. Now, I have maiden horses. I am absolutely scared to death of them. And they know it. And they take total advantage of me. And my mother determined that I was for sure insane when I would get back on one when I got knocked off. So, but I did that and I rode in the park. Not, I didn't have an arena to ride in, but just rode in the park, loved to camp, loved to be in the mountains. So, that kind of got me on the horse to keep from walking. But this arena, this idea, it seems to me, from what I am hearing, and thank you, Randy, and all of you who are here and willing to work on this, that we, and thank you, Chase, Mike Esser, for your efforts in getting the ready rodeo here. I got addicted to rodeo when I was skiing out in Utah one time. I didn't think I'd like to go to a rodeo. I loved it. But that was a great event for this town. And I didn't know how I would go, but thank you for sticking with it and getting that done.
I'm putting on another one in March out of Staco. So, I'll be doing another Grand County rodeo in March. It's gonna be a little bit bigger, a little bit better. I'm gonna add bucking horses into it. So, it should be a lot bigger. I'm gonna have a lot more buggers.
I like the idea of getting a committee together. We certainly want to get the right people together for that. And what I'm hearing is that we already have a bit of a foundation, if not a lot of foundation built here to move this thing forward. And we also have Southwest County Commission, who is active, is our economic development representative. They are always willing to look for funds for us to do things like this. And certainly, this can be considered economic development because you're incorrect. They will bring a lot of people here. Once again, my heart is to get something for our children that they can do with their parents and their siblings and their friends. So, I'm a hundred percent for it. And any way that I can support it and help, I would be honored to do that.
Dale?
I think it's a great idea, sir. I mean, we ought to do anything, everything we can to help it become a reality.
So, pass forward. I think I'm hearing getting a working committee together. And I haven't done that before. So, Jacob, would you chair that?
I would.
Okay, I would appreciate that. And then everybody that's willing to work and anyone who wants to volunteer here. And we're not helping any way I can. If you'll get that committee together, then we will get to work.
That's wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Jacob, you'll call me tomorrow, we'll talk a little more.
Hey, let's give it to me.
Nikki Stewart would like to speak.
Just for a second. So, as Bonnie mentioned, I'm Nikki Stewart. And she had mentioned that I'm gonna be heading off to the Future Farmers of America. So, she's gonna be coming into Robbinsville High School. But when in fact, I want to put the car before the horse. So, I actually have a letter of recommendation from the high school principal, David Matson. Can I have permission to pass that out?
Sure. Nikki, would you like to read the letter? Everybody, you too.
Yeah, I'll just leave a copy back. And David Matson's letter reads, Dear Grand County Board of Commissioners, I'm pleased to write this letter of support for the Grand County Saddle Club and the building of an arena in Grand County. In July 2021, I accepted the role as Director of Career and Technical Education for Grand County Schools and quickly realized the need to implement an agriculture program at Robbinsville High School. We have many students that are currently interested in livestock and other farming opportunities. In August of 2023, Robbinsville High School will incorporate an agriculture program for the first time in many years. Between now and that time, we have secured the funds to build a small barn on our campus and purchase the equipment necessary to have a successful agriculture program. We plan to work with Grand County 4H and Cooperative Extension Office and start a Future Farmers of America Club at Robbinsville High School. I believe that the Grand County Saddle Club will be an excellent partner for RHS and give our students increased opportunities that could lead to both business and recreational opportunities within our county. The building of this arena could affect more than just the agriculture students at RHS. The carpentry classes could possibly help with the construction of the project, which would give these students valuable work experience and help make them more employable upon graduation. I ask that as a group, you examine the benefits that this arena and program can have on our entire community, but especially the children of Grand County and fund this project. Help give our children something positive to be involved in. Sincerely, David Matson. So, it is true that Robbinsville High School is gonna be implementing agriculture program this next fall school year. And I would like to be involved in that as much as possible. I'm currently a teacher assistant there. And I will be finishing up my bachelor's in agribusiness this summer of 2023 and hope to apply for the upcoming ag teacher position that will be offered there who will head the FFA. So, while I'm not one hundred percent positive, that will be me. I feel like I stand a good chance and will be applying for that position.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. Are there any other comments from the saddle club? And once again, thank you all very much for coming. We've found at least five friends and I think several more. And that's not really you. I know a lot of you, you've been friends a long time. So, God bless you and the work that you're doing. And let's all work together to get this started.
Before we all go, I have one question. Whose name do I put on the phone number if I want to call us about?
Say that again?
This is Grand County Saddle Club. And there's a phone number, but there is no name of an individual.
Oh, Kayla Wood. I don't know. Kayla Adams.
Kayla Adams?
Yeah. She is the president of our saddle club.
Stand up, Kayla, so there's no you.
Yeah.
Is Derek Cody present with us this evening? All right. Okay. If there's nothing from the saddle club, thank you once again. And now, the St. Paul Valley Center. We can hold a meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you on behalf of the St. Paul Valley Center. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer West and the new executive director there since Beth Fields moved on last year. I submitted a request to you last week regarding our gymnasium building. I hope all of you have a chance to review it. But I'll just reiterate a few points that were in that request. Over the past several years, we've spent some time and effort trying to stabilize the gymnasium building from further deterioration. That gymnasium was built in the 1950s, so it's approximately seventy years old. And we really want to keep that building from deteriorating and the rock work from starting to fall off, as we've seen so many other rock buildings in our area. So, over the past several years, we have received sixty-two thousand seven fourteen in grant funding. And we have also spent some of our own restricted funds for a total of seventy-seven thousand five hundred. And that included restoring our meeting room, which had suffered some water damage because of the gutter system. We replaced the gutter system. We restored the meeting room, found some termites, had those abated. We now have a termite contract in place. We also had some grant funding to repair the cap, the concrete cap work at the top of the rock. And we have funds from that grant to replace the roof over the locker room section of the gym. The other two sections, sorry.
What size is that section of the entire gym?
No, it's just on the left-hand end of the old locker room.
That's what I thought.
I'm not really sure.
About what size is that? Do you know, Liam?
I'm trying to think.
It's probably maybe the length of this right here is new. It's a little bit smaller than the width and the length.
Yeah, it's probably less than the third of the width. I don't really know what the size.
Thirty or forty?
The roofing company told me that the main section and the right-hand end have another fifteen years of life, but that section was not replaced at the time. So, we have funds for that. But the cost of that roof replacement increased from the time we got the estimate to got the grant, to apply for the grant, and to now be able to do the work. The cost of that roof replacement went up almost ten thousand dollars. And also, on top of that, the contractor that gave me the quotes for the cap repair, the step replacement, and for the ceiling of the rock work would not return my call after earlier this spring. So, all year I've been trying to get him to come forward and do the work that he gave me an estimate on. So, we had to get another contractor to do the work for the cap repair and then also for this cleaning and sealing. The roof repair is scheduled for the end of the month. But the new estimate that I had to get from a new contractor for the cleaning and sealing of the rock work came in at twenty thousand four ninety. And we are short on the funds from the grant for pretty much all of that because of the increase in the cost of the materials. So, that's why I've come to you today to see if I could request ten thousand dollars to help pay for that cleaning and sealing of the rock work. Because we feel like with all the other work we've done to restore the gym, that's the last step in stabilizing what we would consider stabilizing the building just to keep the rock work from deteriorating. Because from what I've been told, water can seep behind the rock from the cap work. And then with the freezing thaw of the winter, it starts pushing the rock away from the wall. And we really don't want that to happen. It's in pretty good shape. We're just trying to keep it from getting worse. So, this contractor that gave us the quote for that cleaning and sealing also did some work for this St. Paul Baptist Church. And they came very highly recommended. And in his quote, he outlined exactly what he was gonna do. And he's gonna pressure wash it and then also perform a cleaning to get the mineral deposits off of it and then seal it with a high-quality sealer. And we really feel like that would help to keep the building intact while we move forward with seeking funds to renovate it into something else. And that building, we use that building a lot. We have a shared use kitchen in that building that's been renovated, where people can rent that space in order to create products to sell at the farmer's market. We have the meeting room that's been fully restored now after the water damage that we rent that out. So, that's revenue to the center. We use the gymnasium space for our festival. And also, we are still doing a weekly food distribution that we started doing when COVID hit. We've been doing that since about March of 2020. So, we hand out about fifty boxes in partnership with Man of Food May. So, we really just want to keep that building intact. And so, we're asking the county if they would be willing to contribute ten thousand dollars towards getting that ceiling and cleaning done.
Thank you, Janette. It's been a couple of years since I was over there. There's an outstanding commercial kitchen in place. And the work that's been done on the building has been good work that's done. And I, one, would certainly like to see the building preserved. I don't know much about leaks. I do know water will freeze. And if it gets between the rock and the woodwork, it's very damaging. And it can cause a collapsible wall eventually. So, any questions or, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it needs to be first.
Okay. Lena? You can give us some insight, I guess, on the, that's your back door over there.
I haven't been in the gym.
I know you have, yeah.
When was he able to start, if he would be able to start cleaning the rock?
He would probably be able to start in the next, in the next three to four weeks. We're really trying to get it done before the winter sets in. I mean, we could push it off till spring, but I really would like to get it done, you know, so that we could have the whole thing complete and put to bed before, before the winter weather comes, just to prevent any mishaps. I've spoken to him and he's ready to, ready to work on it.
Jacob?
I think we need to preserve our historic building, especially when we use it. They've done their part. They've got a lot of grant money. First spending, first spending, first getting money, so.
Thank you for the work that you've done to get us to talk on the building. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any other comments or questions that we do speak up. If we will certainly discuss and get back with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we have the agenda. Deacon Camp Road, twenty, we're from the floor over to you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, Tony.
I don't really know where to start here, but the State Highway Commission been talking to me about closing High Deacon Camp Road down there. I guess it was all over as that falling. I looped over into the lake down there. And these four property owners on the west side of where it is, myself and Marcy and her husband, and Amber Beasley and James, I forget whatever. Anyway, we're all right out there at the end. And the bottleneck is our, Marcy and Steve, her husband, have business on the boat. And they've got a little girl there. Anyway, there's no need of people riding through there all the time because everybody over on, what you would say, the east end of the Deacon Camp Road goes out that way. Jason knows what I'm talking about, the way that, like, all the hookers starting on back. But anyway, Andy Russell from Andrews, which is over Cherokee and Grand County, State Highway Commissioner, he gave me a petition for the four people that owns property on this part that we want to close. They said they wanted to drop maintenance on it. That bus turned over up on France Creek, and there was a children in it. And they stopped the bus rattling around through there because the lake is really close to the shoulder of the road. So, they don't, there's no bus route for there anymore. And I am the first property owner between Larry Hookers, which was, they're gonna make a turnaround there. If anybody does want to come in on the west side to turn around and go back, which nobody would be doing that, Doug, Larry Hook, and them, they go out the other way. But anyway, they sent me a petition. Shane Gordon brought it to me from Andy Russell from Andrews. And had all the four property owners on that end to sign. I'll let you guys look at that. I'll let you guys look at that. Marcy's not going to want to share. Her husband would be here, but he had an Oakmont service last week, but not here, but they're sending...
Do they tell you what the next step would be after you get the signatures enough?
Property owners?
Yeah, Andy Russell, he's the one who acknowledged what we were closing. Him's the last one that can say, they can't close that one until they've seen it.
They need a resolution from the county commissioners to take the road out from the end, so we have to close it.
Yeah, let them, you know, they just don't say the county, no money, and then it's not a good, no, the owner counters, no, we're not going to, but I don't know if you don't know, and I want to close. Marcy, her husband, that's the one, they some people ride through there pretty fast, just rest of the young people, you know, which we've got that all over the county though. But anyway.
So what you all need from us is a resolution from this board supporting the closure of that?
Yes, it's not a loop, just the west side of it, where this property starts to go out.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Yeah. I'm confused, yes, not...
Okay. I think this is probably...
Is anybody down there voting to a comment?
No, not here. But they haven't said anything to me about it, but they are the ones that contacted me about it. I talked about it here, I think, my salesmen a year ago, I worked in Tennessee, I was worried about them.
What about if you can oppose that?
About Larry Hook's driveway, about closing his driveway so they can go in the road lane, so they can turn around, not the other people, if anybody down there can turn around and go back. But closing off from the stop sign where Joe Wilson's, yeah, will bother if he was talking, will not, just out for the lake, where it leaves the lake. That's what the state wants to turn back. They don't want to put a car there on that road. But anyway, they, it's just a huge issue, they won't just condemn you a bit, but they're not having Mike to talk, but that's what they want to say.
That's pretty much what you all want, too.
That's what we, that's definitely what, the oil won't, they have beat that down all the time. I found it, I guess, not always my great step, but anyway, it's, it needs to be closed, but it's up to them.
Long as the landowners will be, should be a problem.
You can, and then I'll get it topped up, and then you can sign the next.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion from the board that we, as part of our resolution is supportive, these homeowners who would like this part of the road closed. Is there a motion? In a second, in all favor.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, welcome. We're glad to have you all with us.
Thank you for having us this evening. I'll try to be as brief as I can in my time that you've allowed me to be here. Before I dive into what I'm here for, before I started working at Sheriff's Office, most of you know, I spent nearly 20 years at the school working with kids. Things like the Saddle Club that was mentioned leading this meeting off, not every kid's an athlete, not every kid can play an instrument. But I think for our sake as law enforcement officers, the more that we can give those kids something to do to occupy their time, the better for them. And then when you throw in a program such as the Saddle Club, not only is that teaching them a passion and a love for something that they can carry with them the rest of their life, but it's teaching them a responsibility and the care and maintenance of those animals. That's a, I think that's a tremendous program that will benefit them down the road, and down the road it'll benefit us as a law enforcement agency and the community as well. So I just wanted to put that out there before I got into what I'm here to talk about. First and foremost, I want to lead off. The guys behind, first of all, in case anyone doesn't know me, my name is Jeff Nye. I'm over investigations at Sheriff's Office. Three gentlemen you see standing behind me are my narcotics guys. I've asked them to join me because I'm not ashamed to admit when it comes to narcotics, they know more than I do. They can answer questions that I probably couldn't answer. Some of them I could, but a lot of them, I trust, I trust what they would say. We've been busy lately, to say the least, but I want to lead my part off by saying this, we're not here to ask you for more money. We're not here to ask you for more money. We're not here to ask you for one cent of taxpayer dollars. We want you to know that upfront. We are not here to ask for that. I took over investigations in roughly November of last year, and the numbers I will provide you is just from fiscal year January to press. When I took over, there was a balance in our drug trust fund of roughly $24,000 in odd dollars. Today, that number's more than doubled, and based off of the seizures and arrests that we've made recently, there's pending amounts that's coming in that's going to push that number to between $2 and $250,000. We've been busy. Before the end of the year, that number is going to increase the number that I just gave you, based off of how quick state tax collector can come in and collect these funds. Just to give you a brief overview, this is not every step of the process, but this will kind of give you the gist. Once we go lost one of these, we make an arrest, and that person has in their possession an illicit narcotic or spiritual liquor that exceeds the amount and is a taxable sum, we call in North Carolina State Revenue Agents that's assigned to our region. And his job assumes of this, after decision is made on the narcotics to tax the person that we've charged, B4 form is submitted to the North Carolina Revenue Agent assigned to this region. That agent starts the collection process. This could take days, months, maybe even years. This is based on the subject in question and the Revenue Agent. Once funds are collected, they are transferred into a dedicated account. That is the account that I mentioned to you previously. In most departments, funds from this account is used to completely or mostly fund a narcotic division and a drug task force. And I want you to know also that Graham County is part of a regional task force with the surrounding agencies around us. And I think that's been a great partnership so far because it's paying some huge, huge dividends.
How many counties, if it is a number of counties, or what is involved in the regional task force?
I'll let Detective Page, if he wants to just give a brief statement. Currently, we have three counties and one police department. Is that correct?
Yeah.
If he wants to give a brief overview, because he personally went around, excuse me, went around and submitted all these applications, agreements with these surrounding agencies and had them signed.
So I'm Grant Page. Nice to meet you guys. Thank you for your time. The task force agreement set up, wrote it out, I went and had meetings with the different heads of the departments, the sheriffs and police chiefs. Currently, there are three county sheriff's offices and also a police department. They're attached to the Western North Carolina Drug Task Force that we created, and we've been running for approximately a year now.
What counties are applying?
Right now, we have Cherokee County, Graham County, Clay County, and Bryan City Police Department. Is that, that's it, that's what it is now, and hopefully that will expand soon.
Any other questions? These funds that we get based off these funds and forfeitures can be used in a variety of ways, from training to equipment, to vehicles, to drug education programs. And like I touched on earlier, I have a soft spot in the heart for kids. That's what I did mostly for the most part of my law enforcement career, and we are going to get back to them at schools with these programs. And these funds can completely fund that. Taxpayers don't have, it's money that's already in an account here in Graham County. So taxpayers don't have to pay another extra dime out of their pocket. One of the questions that was raised to me, because we're looking at the possibility of two vehicles, well, if you get two vehicles, there's going to be insurance, there's going to be maintenance costs, blah, blah, blah. My question to that is, do these same people know the cost of equipment, training, and all those things of that nature, the technology that we use now, that we've never been able to use before? We will more than supplant that amount. We will more than do that. The benefits to having these two vehicles, again, as Detective Page talked about, we are part of a regional task force. That will allow us to go into other counties to use them in our county. And I know Graham County's a small place, but then probably the island, those that need to know, that want to know who our drug guys are, they're going to know about their guy. They know that. But what they don't know is these other counties have already been in our county for a while, and they've been working. And that's the exchange that we do with this task force, is we will send some of our officers to work in those counties and assist them from time to time as well. It's a give-and-take type program, and it pays huge dividends for either side. We had a drug bust just the other evening where another agency in the task force assisted it, played a major role. I'm sure you've probably seen it on social media, you'll probably read about it in the paper this week. And that's just part of what that drug task force will do as far as one in other counties. And I can't get into the rest of what all we do, but kind of give you a gist of what we can, can do. Does anybody have any questions, really one of us?
I don't have a problem with it. I understand what the money is, but I personally, I would rather wait till election, because you got to ensure.
I understand. And my answer to that is simply this, I've listened to both sheriffs and their debates, talked to them sparingly, just to say the least, and any sheriff without, excuse me, any sheriff of any merit is going to want this program up and running and not having hiccups once they take office. They've got enough in the place, and they're going to want this in place. And these guys, I've got to tell you, whenever I came in, I sat them down, and my expectations were simple. I said, I want them all. I want them all. Now, I know we ain't getting everything, and anybody, any law enforcement officer that stands before you and says, I'll come in here and I'll clean every drug in this county, is lying to your face. Because the second you stop one wave, there's going to be another wave. The second you stop five waves, another wave's going to stop. But it's given us the necessary tools that make it as big a game as humanly possible. I don't know a person in this county that's not been touched by overdose or some sort of form of drug addiction. I've not met them. And I'm not to stand up here saying that we will knock all the drugs out, because we want, and anybody else that stands up here and tells us that, I guarantee you, they're lying. They can, unless you increase the size of this park of tenfold. And then, even then, people will find a way. So my time for being here, I appreciate, and I thank you so much, but again, my request for being here tonight is for two vehicles for our narcotics officers from a fund that already exists.
Let me ask a question, repeat. Are you thinking about when the new sheriff takes office, or will you be okay with making this decision where the election is?
It's certainly everyone, but ultimately, whichever one gets elected is going to be running the park. And I'm sure that they're going to, but they may have a little different idea of what kind of vehicles you're going to give or something like that. I don't know.
It would show a lot of kind of understanding that you all want to do that with the government sheriff is going to get. My other question would be, can you think of any way that the program would be seriously harmed by waiting a couple to three weeks to take this section?
My answer is this, and I don't mean this rude, and it's going to probably come across as rude, and Miss Or, you've known me for a long time. I've known you as Colin, you know, you as Miss Or, but, and like I said, I do not mean this rude in any way, shape, or form, but we cannot send a letter out to all the drug dealers to wait a couple of weeks until the election. These guys are working right now. We're here in the moment, we're right now.
Thank you for your answer, and we certainly will give this complete consideration as the board in Cleveland make a decision.
Sorry? The vehicles? Yes, we did, as a matter of fact.
Is that too rude?
No.
No?
We did, as a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago, maybe, and we did have them found, and I was told I need to come present at the board meeting. So that's going to, those are going to change. We're getting these off of dealer lots or websites that law enforcement people have been bought from in the past.
I believe, if we can...
I'm just curious, have you got vehicles located or identified that?
We did.
You do?
Yes, sir. We did at the time of the initial request.
Okay.
But like I said, once I was told I had to come here, we had to put that on hold, and the dealerships were like, well, we can't hold on to the vehicle. So it may still be available, but that's been three weeks, and it's a good chance those are probably sold, so we might have to choose something else.
So you want to buy a new?
No.
Or used?
Yes, sir. A very serviceable, used vehicle with low mileage.
They are really equipped?
I'm sorry?
They are already equipped?
It depends on how you mean equipped. For some of the surveillance?
Whatever you want.
Yes. For some of it, yes, but one of them is a blend-in type vehicle for a K-9 that's also going to house SRT equipment plus drug investigative equipment, so that one will probably not be equipped, but that is something that we can equip. That's not a problem. The other one will literally blend in like it's a Saturday. The other one will literally blend in like it's a Saturday soccer match, and somebody showed up.
Thank you all very much.
I would say, personally, go ahead myself, and if it were to ease anybody's concern, we've only got two candidates for sheriff. If each one of them were a rival there to support for it, and go ahead and proceed. If that makes sense. If I was running for sheriff, and I was good, would I write you a letter right now?
Mr. Wiggins, too, you know, this topic similar has come up one time before. And I think you had one of the most memorable responses to it, if I remember correctly. So this is something that's not the first time the board's been brought to the board about. I wish this was something that we could have like a standing order, but we don't have to take up y'all's time. And we go ahead and get to work. But Mr. Wiggins has already addressed this on one occasion at a board meeting.
It sounds like that you all could get a letter from each candidate in support of this.
I mean, we could, but it's just, it's not really necessary at this point.
And you have the money in your budget?
Yes, ma'am. And again...
They're all coming for us with a budget request, because they have money in their budget. That money can be spent on the sheriffs.
Yeah, so basically, the additional money, Mr. Knight is correct, the drug money has that four and double. And with this additional infusion that's going to come, that I'm sure will four and cover the cost. And basically...
I'm sorry to cut you off, but if everything we have pending were, we'll give you a hypothetical. If everything that we have pending, which is what we have, were coming to fruition, we'll be approaching probably 250, 300,000 dollars. So that number is going to be 10, 11 plus times.
So basically, our role is pre-ordered. You know, the sheriff's budget is the sheriff's budget. And he has the authority to spend the money as he sees fit. And our current sheriff is Jerry Chris, so if he's approved it, then we just need to do a pre-audit and handle it, because the money is sitting there.
I don't have any problems. And you're not taking up our time, needless to say. We appreciate you coming.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate your time.
Absolutely. And I certainly respect everything that you've said, and thank you back for that. We're very familiar with that. And I certainly also like to show respect for all of my board members as well, so I'm sure.
And just to reiterate, too, this dollar amount, it's not a budgeted amount. It's not a pre-ordered amount. This is money that these guys have gotten based off the rest they've made, and that's coming through.
And the pre-audit, just for FYI, is just part of our statutory, my statutory requirement, that I look at the expenditure, say the budget's there, the money's there, and then I sign off on it. That keeps me out of jail. If we would, as the money comes in, the additional monies come in, we will want to amend the sheriff's budget up for that revenue, so that gives the sheriff more spending power.
Do you think we're clear on what we can do? Any of you have any other comments?
No. Yeah, any questions for us?
No further. Can I see?
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Madam Chair, your mistress, my name is Roger Bartlett, and I'm with Western Builders, a company out of Selva, and we're instructing here, obviously, a middle school science builder. And we're approximately, I'd say 90% complete. We've had several delays during the process, and which is documented through FADG3, or LP3, I think they call themselves that.
Yeah.
And back in July, we wrote a letter to Scott Donald, requested some general, additional general conditions. And we thought it would be prudent to explain to you folks exactly what I was involved in general conditions. We have been granted over 250 days extension. Started out with Mr. D.R. Phillips, and we couldn't get catch basins, we couldn't get pipe, we couldn't, we couldn't get concrete, we had bad soil. And it's all documented of what all these items were. And I won't get into that, but we're about six months over. We're due to be completed, and we're granted time until December the 6th, which should be, will be a problem. All the delayed things, the bad dirt stuff's over with. Our general conditions are items that we wrote, trying to describe what general conditions are. And I didn't bring enough copies to give you folks.
And I'll speak up. I provided a copy in Rogers here from Western Builders. This is something that I kind of preempted the board with a month or so ago. You should have a copy on your tables. Where you see your NCACC, you got it. You see, you should see a copy of the WBI document on top of that, right under the NCACC.
Powerful presentation. And I wanted to try to explain what I was involved in general conditions, and answer any questions that you may have about why are these costs involved. Our superintendent, you know, basically, he's a guy from the last. He's a salary employee, and that's his actual salary per month, $6,300. The truck and fuel, for example, if we took the IRS' rate at 58 cents a mile from where we traveled from Selva here, it would be in excess of $1,100. We've asked for $650. That's really our cost involved in putting that guy in the truck. Fuel, we all know about fuel. Corner jobs, that's for two corner jobs, and I think there's about four on the job. Equipment expense, right now, there's snorkel, law skid steer, and many excavators. It's been there a really long time. Cleanup, if I paid, we paid eight hours a week for one land, it would be $613. And we're asking $475 a month. The insurance, builder's risk, as the state continues on, is actually the cost that we pay the insurance company. $1,370. So in essence, what we're asking for, there's no overhead, there's no profit, there's no project management fee, there's no office expense. These are straight costs. And I wanted to explain to you, if you had any questions, why we were asking for that. And we're basically asking for seven months of this general condition. We originally started out six, and it depends, we just offered a change order to the school system board for a walker trail to pave, and not go close to the building, but up on the bank and around. So it'll be approximately, I think, 600 foot, 10 foot wide, installed with eight foot of I-2, two inch asphalt. So I really, I really don't know if you got any questions, but I'll be glad to try to answer.
So you're asking for seven months?
Yes, ma'am.
At 12, 704, I believe that comes to $88,928.
There was a change order request that went in from that man, madam, and I think it was 88, some change. I'm not, I'm not sure. There were several other items, and this just went up to 17. We added a panic button. We agreed, when we finished, concrete was 145 yard, now it's 167 yard. We've asked for additional paving to go from what I call vocational miller on the shop to the new building that wasn't originally scheduled. We gave us a credit for a sidewalk that we did not put in because they chose not to put the sidewalk close to the building so that walkers wouldn't come close to the science builder. They had some benches, they deleted some lockers, that was a credit to another change order we had six months ago. They put some wood benches in there so that kids could charge their iPhones, I guess, or iPads. We added some bollards. There was a fear of perhaps somebody coming around the circle could actually drive into the front doors. So there's some steel forged powder with the concrete. And then, and these are pending, they haven't been accepted. I mean, this is what is offered as a rebate from the owner of the school for consideration. So we don't have approval on this, but I'm trying to let you know what I was taking place, what they want to do. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be other items.
How much, how much of the change orders?
I...
Law order.
I have, where's that another?
No, for the change order.
That's the change order. It may be, it may be off of 2,000, but my head is around 150,000.
150,000?
No, that includes the idea.
What's our share?
We were at 1.3.
Well, I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maria, but the school system reached up the DPI, and they said they were not providing more funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, I need to verify, and I'll try to verify tomorrow, because I was talking to Scott Donald a little bit about it, too. We're not sure if she just asked against a grant, or if she asked total from anything, because they're offering a lot of money to Cherokee County. So I just want to verify that tomorrow, just to be sure that she's exhausted all her means with DPI.
Right. Because, you know, we could have got 15 million. So why they would want to put a ceiling on it at this point, knowing the conditions that they had faced since COVID started? Worst case scenario, if we get the DPI money, it would be 25%, would be the county share. I do have, as I'm sitting and listening, it occurred to me that worst case scenario would be county pays 100%. However, because we paid the QZAD note off last year, that gives more cushion on the sales tax money that we would be either placing in that capital reserve that we, you know, put in place to make the note payment, or reverting to the schools. So there's money there that either the school can avail themselves through a reversion, or, you know, we just subtract it from what we would give them anyway. Because it's capital outlay, it's capital improvement, it's perfectly okay to use that additional sales tax money that we didn't spend because we didn't have the QZAD.
But I'm making sure that I'm safe.
Exactly.
That's what I was, 100%. If we can make sure that we can obtain all we can from them, then that way, it makes it a little bit easier for the county.
Right. I just cannot understand, because we did not ask for 15 million, why they capped it.
And that was the first thing, when this first came up, I talked to Roger on site, and we said, we went straight to Angie and said, ask DPI, because they helped fund this farm. We know, I think Scott told me that they've offered 50 million to Cherokee County, and they don't even want it. So something is not right, and that's why I want to reach back out to Angie, and maybe even go over and sit with her and say, what's happening here? Because it doesn't make sense. And I think we'd be more comfortable with doing the 25% or our part like we were doing with the original contract to begin with, so.
I just wanted to try to explain what general conditions are and why we're asking for that.
I appreciate that, because that's the general conditions, and that's two words to be in that door. So thank you very much.
Well, you know, it doesn't mean it either. And I wanted to try to come forward and just say, if you got any questions, you need backup of all this stuff, we'd be glad to send it to whoever we need to send it to, it went to Scott. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Maria.
I appreciate it, Roger, you being willing to come out. Like I said, I see that monthly, and again, I want to encourage you to go see the job. They're doing an outstanding job. They've done work for us on our buildings. They're great builders. We'll do what we can to...
We appreciate you going to Grand County. We've done a lot of work up here in the years. It's been a pleasure. Good people, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion. Mr. Maria?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm ready to go. I will present this month's manager's report. I feel like we've got a lot of good news coming through in this report, and then I'll roll into my project manager report after that. First item is the Forest Plan Objection. The update with that is really that I have no update. We were expecting an answer from US Forest Service this month. I've not seen anything about that response, so no news to report. And I'm assuming that maybe Hayden and Forest and scheduling our meeting is kind of waiting on what they might be providing or the information that's going forward. So really nothing new. I have not seen any emails from Forest Service on their response.
Have you heard anything from Forest or?
I have not. I've emailed them a couple of times. I've reached out again to verify where we're at with setting up that next meeting. Moving on to the CDVG grant updates on the neighborhood revitalization. We're actually seeing almost daily occurrences, or at least weekly occurrences, on information being passed. And I want to stress to the board, to understand that we, this venue is working on processing information constantly. And we do see a slowdown in getting response from the state from NC Commerce. So I just want to make sure that that's out there. But we did receive on our sole source for the, our rehabilitation specialist, we got approval actually today from NC Commerce to proceed with our sole source procurement, for qualified housing specialists to begin negotiations and agreement, and try to reach a contract with Currituck Homes. So that's great. That puts us in the, if we can reach an agreement with them, we will be going forward for sure with those projects. That's pretty much it on the neighborhood revitalization update. We moved on to the coronavirus update. Senior Center, we actually got, was notified, I think, Monday, was it yesterday? I think it was either yesterday or late last week, the Grand Administrative, we're able to continue working on Senior Center, that design build. So we've got to verify that that contract and that vehicle will work. I'm here... I'm, I'm hearing through all sources that we should be good to go on that vehicle, which will help speed up the process of that work as well over at the senior center. Great place. The amended request for project budget to transfer funds between equipment and construction was approved again yesterday. So again, we're receiving updates weekly on this. And that's good news, that, that kind of helps us with a hurdle that we kind of had, and we will work with them on that project and go forward with Germin as well. And then on the EMS training part of that grant, Germin is complete. I saw the paperwork, you guys saw the paperwork, and the order was placed for the equipment last week. They selected state of the art training equipment, and that stuff is on order, we're waiting to get that. So moving, we're moving and we're spending. Moving on, the next couple of items, we're going to be talking about grants that we are actually just finding out about as well too, which is very, very exciting to say the least. Received notification on October the 11th, 2022, that Grand County Public Health received a grant from the Dogwood Health Trust in the amount of $36,870.92. In partnership with the Nanahala Health Foundation, funds from Grand County, approximately, because this initial grant was done prior to a lot of the equipment changes, and then maybe a month, a month and a half, two months later, they reached back out and got prices. We're at about 2,800, less than what we really need, or, or what we really needed, it's came in about 19 grand more, or 19 grand each, started out at 18,000, so about 1,000 more, 1,100 more per chair. But it'll, that $36,000 grant will enable the health department to replace the remaining two ill chairs and units. So we'll have those completely replaced coming forward. I know there was one chair that was scheduled to be replaced this month. They came out, did the measurements, but they have not called back on when they will be scheduling to come out and redo that one chair. So that's great news for the dental clinic and being able to fund those continuing replacement of all of those. So we're, we're remembering that 36,000 as we move on. The next one is just, is such a surprise and exciting occurrence that we were able to work with, and Ms. Becky started this ARPA Advantage Grant application for low housing, low income housing last May. And they applied for it, I think, working with Ms. Sophia, she worked some on it as well too. And they leveraged the combined talent and effort of Southwestern Communication with my knowledge and building in Ms. Becky's work in finance and her history with working with CDVG as well as the Dogwood Brand. And then we're working with the RDA that we did with our Moose Branch, our housing, our property over there. And we received notification on October 12th, the grant in the full, $500,000, $500,000 grant going towards low income housing. And as you, as you're seeing what we've provided, Grand County initiated a low income home building and repair program partially financed by the North Carolina Department of Commerce through the CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization Program. The $750,000 grant received from NC Commerce will be supplemented by local dollars and Dogwood Health Trust ARPA Advantage Funds to cover the cost of construction in the current volatile price environment. Upon completion, five new homes will be built for qualified low income houses, households, and three to five existing homes will be significantly, significantly repaired and brought up to safe and stable condition. This project, this program is estimated to serve 15 to 20 low income individuals in Grand County and will establish a model that can be demonstrated when applying for future grant funds. So a big thanks to Dogwood Health Trust for believing in our vision for better housing for our low income residents. It's so important because we were, with, with the amount of changes in costs, you just witnessed it from our builder over at the school, the way our costs have increased, and we were thinking we weren't going to be able to help as many people with the CDVG funds that we had, and this really helps us to believe we're going to be able to complete those contracts. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, I was so excited.
It was amazing. And another one that was, we, we actually talked to our representatives when they were here, and I continue to talk to them periodically. We'll move on to the Grand County Public Pool and the stream debris removal. We received notification again on October 17th, yesterday, that Grand County has been selected to receive directed grant funds distributed by the Southwestern Commission Council of Governance. On behalf of offices of Senator Corbin, Representative Gillespie, Grand County will receive 275,000 for two specific projects. 75,000 for pool resurfacing and 200,000 for stream debris removal. Grand County has already received a $50,000 grant assistance for the pool. That brings a total grant assistance to resurface the pool to 125,000. Almost, there's a little bit of a difference. I had it for my projects, about 10,866. The 135, 866, 38 was the total contract. I'll, I'll go over, if you're okay, I'll go over a little bit of that. And, and it's contractual, so we may go into close, because I can break it down, it's the, what I talked to Jonathan, our architect, about it. I'd like to go into close because it's talking about contracts and the board for potentially the money going forward. So I'll cover that a little bit later in close, if that's okay, yeah. So in, in total, with all the grant funding, just in the last few days, that comes to And we will put that good money to good use for, as you know, the projects that we have working for the Grand County for sure. The last item I have would be just an update on the Grand County Closed Landfill Water Quality Monitoring. The one site that needed to be prepared for the first monitoring wells was cleared and finished on Wednesday, October 12th. All three sites are ready, and installation of all monitoring wells is scheduled to begin on Monday, October 24th. And the intent with that would be for them to just do all three while they're here so there's no remodelization site. So that project will be underway and completed as well as hopefully this fall. Anything further on, or questions on what I've reported? Great, great news. I'll move on to the project, the manager's report, provided that as well. I received the final, well, I shouldn't say final invoice, I received the invoice for the last work and for the RDA, the Moose Branch subdivision, it's now Azalea Hills. I assume the last invoice that'll come from DR is for, will be for the retainage. Once the engineer comes out and verifies all the work is complete, checks it off, that will represent the final invoice. So that project is basically complete. Got a lot of nice things that's coming to fruition over there. As the board knows, we awarded the mechanical contract for the cemetery building. Full project is, they're actually forming up for, to pour driveways. I think they're gonna, I think, there's some work at the cemetery that they're going to do on the 20th and the cemetery, the, the actual Mother Church, they're building a ramp in there that we have done through the board, the cemetery board, to help get their tractor in and out of the cemetery. They're going to pour that on the 20th, and then they have a placement for the cemetery driveway on the 25th up there at our building to concrete that driveway into the door. That project's about 70% complete. We're still waiting on a couple of dollar numbers for Recreation Apartment that's standing at 65% complete. I'll provide those as soon as I get those. More than likely, we'll maybe do a poll, or I'd like to get those numbers to the board prior to the next meeting if possible. And as you know, the number four item, the women's restroom, that project 67% complete. All the tile, as you see, the materials are here, the, waiting on the, obviously the inspection of the rough end for the plumbing, which is completed, the electrical's underway, I'll get with Jacob. All the materials of that is going to be here, so we'll roll over into the other bathroom, should be no delays, and we'll move forward finishing the women's bathroom as soon as possible. That's all we're waiting on, is to finish a little bit of the electric work. The, the, the new vent fans are smaller than the existing, so we want to be able to fix the ceiling, do some cheaper work before we get the tile, at least laid on the floor. The walls can go forward, but before we do any tile work on the floor. Then the next item, item five, is our new justice center. Proud to let the board know that we did complete all our interviews and presentations with all three firms, architectural firms, appreciate Commissioner Eller and Commissioner Mills, and Clerk Holloway being a part of that, as well as Ms. Garland. I thought it was a great process, we learned a lot. All three were excellent candidates for the work that we need done. But as our, collectively, I even, along with Commissioner Eller, was gracious enough to provide some of his feedback as well. It is the committee's recommendation that the board move forward with negotiation with mostly architecture. And if it's the board's decision, we can start that negotiation immediately. I'll be sending out, obviously with the board's approval, emails, obviously letting the other ones that weren't selected know, and the one that was selected know where we're standing. And then, and we move into the negotiations where our attorney, Coward, will be working closely with us. We'll be discussing things like fees, make sure the schedule that we are all concerned about going forward. And anything that Grand County will have, our supplemental conditions, that'll be part of the AIA contracts that Commissioner, Attorney Coward is aware of. We'll need a decision from that for the board to move forward with negotiation with low water architecture.
And what will these negotiations entail for the most likely?
Basically, just going back and forth with the fees and providing the information that you, that he'll, that Attorney Coward will look through in that AIA contracts, those architectural contracts, and it'll be able to provide into the commissioners just everything that you want to see, that'll include the fees, the schedules, and any Grand County supplemental conditions, and you'll be able to see the contract. And, and that negotiation happens back and forth, probably with their attorney, I would assume, as long as it honors, and then once you reach agreement, everybody settles on the contract, it would be signed as a design contract, and we would move forward with the design. And it's really a process that, it's up to us how long that takes really, and what we want in our contract once we move forward with it. Yeah, I'll move, I'll move on to middle school. We've already kind of touched on the middle school, I provided a, a schedule for their, actually their status. And like you said, they're 93%, they're probably closing out in December, but really, really nice project and what they're doing as they go over there. The Little Snowbird project, like I said, I want to go over it a little bit in close, I have some quick notes on it. Really good news, I think, and we'll roll over a little bit in close. Again, I went over the, the Recreation Apartment, that basically, the pool's resurfacing is 100%. I'm showing 99.9 because there's a couple of punch list items, but it really, really looks good if you get a chance. They're filling it up now, they recommended, when we have the surfacing redone, they did the diamond grides, sprayed it all in and then trouted over. They recommend filling that pool up to your level for 28 days to let that cure. So they're in the process of filling the pool now. But a lot of really good work went in, went on over at our pool, and it really looks good, so proud of that as well. And the last item is the surface, no schedule I've received from the state yet on the resurfacing. Other than that, that's all I have, unless there's any questions for me on the project.
Jason, I'll try to go as quickly as I can, I have several things to go through with the board. First is our regular finance report. Our ending cash balance in the general fund as of September 30th was 76,660,229.88. We are a little bit lower than this time last year, about, about a little under $78,000. But I'm waiting on some grant funds to come in, and so, you know, we spent the money and we're waiting on the money, so hopefully that will backfill that variance. If you look at the Capital Management Trust accounts, you'll see that our capital projects account is now at a little over 2.9 million. The school capital project is hanging in there, a little under 115,000. We still have 902.5 in our American Rescue Plan, and then our skip grant is now at 5,033,000. So we have earned 33,000 in interest on that since we placed that money in the account last spring. That makes you smile. This past month, in that, the Capital Management Trust accounts, we earned a little over $19,000 for the month, and since the new fiscal year began, we earned a little, a little over 49,000. So that does help to a lot of money, and that helps us as we save money for our courthouse. If you look at page three, you'll see that property taxes rebounded just a tad, and I apologize, I meant to change my color scheme, but if you look above the green yellow, you'll see the September 30 numbers. We did, did do a little bit better in tax collections this past month at 348, 340,008, which was a little bit better than last year's 296. And then we got in a little over 20,000 in back taxes versus last year's 11,000. So our total taxes collected were 361,000 and some change. So that has helped our property tax ambush to rebound. And then our VTS stood a little over 60,000 versus 55 this time last year. So that, that is improving, and we will probably see that improving as we get closer and closer to the, to the deadline for payment. Page four, you'll see that we've collected 1,664,000 in current, past year property, real property taxes, and a little over 186,000 in DMV. We still are at a deficit of about 72,000 in our real taxes, which basically equals our deficit in cash. You know, it's a little bit under than that. The DMV is about $10,000 higher than this time last year. And we are standing at 22.02% in our collection rate, this time last year was 23.5. However, if you factor in that we had more discoveries this year and our levy went up, we're basically at ground level with our collection rate for this, at this time. If you look on page six, you'll see that we're still struggling as far as meeting revenue versus expenditures, but that's pretty common for this time this year. But I do want to go over a couple of things that explain where our costs are and where changes in costs are. Our revenues for the month of September were 1,416,000, or expenditures were 1,966,000. So we did have a deficit of a little under 550,000. And if you look at the bottom of that column, you'll see that our deficit is at, brought at 576,000. I did a little analysis though, and basically, for a year at length this time last year, we're kind of even with where we were, so that's, we haven't lost ground. But if you'll notice, our changes, we have had more revenues than expenditures over time, but our expenditures have gone up. And as I said, I did a real quick analysis. One thing that you'll see is we had three payrolls in September, and you'll see this in the budget numbers, so that pushes up the expenditures. Our, our last payroll was 930, September 30th, so that bumps up our expenditures. And that last payroll was 356,000. The pool renovations, we had paid about 43,000, and we, of course, will be getting that money back. Attorney fees are about 99.5 from this time last year, these are increases. Fuel costs for the, the. Fuel costs for the, the three months have increased $34,000 from this time last year. And then our benefit costs. Remember when we were going through budget with retirement and insurance, so far has increased $183,000. So we're looking at about $715,000 in increased costs this year over this past year, last year. And anytime I see a variance like that, I'm always going to dig deep and see where it is. So the board can always be fully informed as to where we are. Sales tax on page seven, we had a matter of helping money. Of course, this is mostly inflation, but some tourism, I'm thinking. We collected in, aside from the quarter cent, we collected $280,000 in sales tax. This time last year, we collected $259.5. So we are a little bit healthier. We have about a $50,000 variance positive. And the, and then we collected another $26,000 in the quarter cent. It's just basically saddling at about $26,000, a very few dollars here and there. So at this point, we have swirled back $838,000 for the count, for the courthouse. And in the next few days, I'll be transferring the first quarters of the variance of $186. So that will go into the capital management account. So you'll see that, that account go up somewhat. Tax collections, again, our tax collector works very, very diligently. And you'll see on page eight, just basically what our balances are in our back taxes. Any questions on the finance report? All righty. On the budget, we should have 75% left in the budget. And if you'll note, I always highlight the ones that are running hot or running ahead of budget. Of course, the election board is, but that's explainable. They had to pay their big maintenance fee that they pay annually. It's always like in September, so that pushes their budget up. But then there are also attorney fees related to the appeal on the election with the town of September. All the other departments are running within budget or close to it. Again, a few of the departments I've noted on the side is just where we had three September payrolls, which pushed the budget numbers ahead. County line, we're at 76% remaining, so we're staying within budget. It's just, it's just a tough year for budget, just because as we noted in budget workshops, we had a lot of big expenditures coming our way and we're just having to fulfill those obligations. Plus all this increasing the cost of doing business. Any questions?
I would just say it's impressive that we are holding the line like we are even with the deficit, considering the increase in costs. It's just phenomenal. And nothing we really could have anticipated, sort of, but not totally.
We just, we just knew, yeah. And also, you know, one thing that I, you know, advise the department managers about is, you know, curb your spending. We're, we always send needs versus wants. But right now, until property tax revenues rebound, and, you know, we've got to be as frugal as we can be. I do have one amendment and one potential amendment after I explain. I'll give the first amendment is budget amendment number five. It is attached to your report there. This is to recognize $10,150, an additional ARPA SNAP funding that the DSS is permitted to use for some capital outlay. I'm thinking they're going to do some computer maintenance. And so we just need to recognize that additional revenue.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve amendment number five.
Right.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. And before I present the next amendment, I wanted to advise the board. You'll see in your packet, it says local assistance and tribal consistency fund. We got advice this past week that Congress had appropriated additional $2 billion to provide payments to counties in the United States who receive pilt funds because of federal owned properties and tribal properties. So how they are going to distribute that money is based on population, but also based on the disproportionate impacts that COVID had to our rural counties slash federally owned counties, because we can't, we don't have any tax base. And so I was really excited to find out that we are going to receive two tranches of money, $454,354, times two, for a total of $906,708. This is above and beyond our regular pilt and it's also above and beyond ESRS funding that we would receive. The February, if you look on, I think on the fourth page, you'll see that I piled eligible uses of funds. And it's basically gave more us to use the funding to help enhance public services and health, education, housing, public safety, infrastructure to facilitate economic development, improving health outcomes, workforce enhancement and technology enhancements. So I went ahead and this afternoon, logged into the U.S. Treasury, made it known that our county did want the money and will be glad to accept our gift. And I think Manager Marino signed off on his part before the workshop. From what they say, we will probably get all of this funding within this fiscal year. It, it straddles their fiscal year. So they'll send one set in the old year and one set in the new year. So we will be receiving this additional funding and that, that is going to be a great blessing to the county and our ability to provide the services that our taxpayers deserve to have. And that's not a drop in the bucket compared to what we could get if we could tax our lands. But we'll take all the cards and letters when we can get.
And they should have gotten $300,000.
Absolutely. So that being said, at some point, once the funding arrives, I'll be asking the board to set some priorities on how we would like this, this money to be earmarked for projects. But I do have a budget amendment to go ahead and recognize the funding. At this point, it'll add our fund balance for the 908688. So this would be to recognize the LATCF fund.
I will entertain a motion to approve amendment number six.
Right.
Is there a second, please?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, so.
I'm not going to vote for it. I was on one of the fans.
Yes, and I was getting ready to say, hey, this is Commissioner Cody, because he received an email from NACO last week and he quickly shared it with Manager Marino and myself. And we started digging, diving deep. And so we owe him a debt of gratitude for making sure that we got the email. I didn't receive an email. Commissioner Cody gives all the credit for finding that money. I'm just the administrator.
And I think he found about $400,000 worth of library.
Yes. He had a good week.
Sure might have. Really good break.
He did. The last thing that I would like to present to the board is that we do have a grant opportunity, maybe in the pipeline. It's, it's called the Rural Transformation Grant. Ann Lay and Becca Scott helped us to locate this potential pot of money. We can apply for up to $950,000. It is a competitive grant, number one, so we're not assured that we're going to receive it. But they are going to give preference to tier one distressed counties. So we had a phone call with them yesterday, I believe, and kind of knocked around some ideas. And we really weren't coming up with a whole lot that we, that might fit the bill, okay? However, we asked Southwest Commission to, you know, reach out Commerce and, you know, kind of that, a few brainstorm ideas, which let Manager Marino cover. But if you turn to the second page of the handout, you'll see that basically they're looking for four, four different types of projects. Downtown revitalization, resilient neighborhoods, community enhancements for economic growth and rural community capacity building. Now, I wasn't feeling real good about this when I walked in here. In fact, I was like, do I even need to present this until the saddle fund pays?
There you go.
And I don't know, but I think we need to check in with Southwest Commission and look at it as a community enhancement for economic growth type project. So I asked, yeah, I asked Ms. Criss. She brought some stuff back in to Clerk Chris, if maybe we can have some more conversation and see where we're at. Now, the rub is we got till November 1st to apply. But we only had two weeks to apply for the half a million from Dogwood, okay? And Ann Lay and Becca Scott are ready to help us pull a grant application together. Becca said the grant application is not very complex. They're already working on getting employment numbers and different data together of the, you know, negative impacts of COVID on our population. And, and they did ask that the board adopt a resolution, basically saying you wanted to laud for the grant. Now, when I sprang this thing this afternoon, I didn't know what this, I selected real generic. But basically, it says that the board commissioners has indicated it's associated with system development efforts in Grand County. They support, fully support proposed projects, which will result in the acquisition, development of rehabilitation of distressed properties and building capacity that the board wishes to pursue a formal application for a selective program. And I listed the four categories in the amount of $950,000 and the resolve that the board is authorized to submit formal application to Commerce for this grant. We asked Becca and Ann if this was a good idea and they said it never hurts because this is our placeholder resolution to say that we are going to record the money.
It's not. You just need to adopt the resolution. Do you require a motion to approve the resolution for the Rural Transformation Grant application? Is there a second? Thank you. And all in favor?
And I'm also wondering if any part of money might be used on that saddle fund project.
There you go.
Yeah.
Be sure they would.
For him. Certainly match on this number.
Not much.
Even better.
Bring them.
Good luck.
So we'll get busy.
Yeah. Our, I brought up the shed sanitation, that's a potential good option. Problem with half of it.
Going to help you some bit.
Yep. It's inside.
Yes, monetarily.
You've got to, you've got to do some. Let it get good off.
That's all I had.
We have, have, voted on everything you can vote on?
Yes.
Thank you, baby. Appreciate that. And do we have anyone for public comments? Okay. And four discussion items, which are freedom.
All right. So we'll start with releases of $636.93 and discoveries of $304.99.
And you have a copy of those if you look at the market like I know, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve releases of $636.93 and discoveries of $304.99. Thank you. And a second, all in favor?
All right. Need action on approving the polls for emergency meeting, urgent care in San Tuchie October the 7th. VFIS payment of $26,238. Rent for $3,000, $360.25 for medical facility.
Okay. And I will entertain a motion to approve all those. And I, we're new to the VA, and VFIS was an insurance payment for the, our department. So I will entertain a motion to approve all of these pre-voted polls. We have a motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you.
All right. Prove resolution to codenamed SR1106, East Main Street Veterans Memorial Field.
Is there any discussion on the approval before we go to the votes? If not, I will entertain a motion to codename State Road 1106, East Main Street, Veterans Memorial Field. Can I make that motion? I'd like to. Is there a second, please? All in favor? All right. Thank you all so much.
Next item, reappoint Billy Brown to the TNT board.
Excuse me. Sorry. Mr. Brown, according to the traveling tourism bylaws, it's been almost 12 years. Mr. Brown has exhausted his, we have one more member that has. So the only way to continue would be to travel tourism to amend their bylaws.
Okay. Do you all have a candidate in mind?
No, we can come back in November with suggestions.
Do you want to just, oh, tell me about that?
Yeah. Because I've got another key member that I'd like to just want about bylaws and so much, and we'll use Robert Turner as well. And I'd like to, so I'll bring that up with the traveling tourism board. Yeah.
Thank you so much. All right.
Next item would be Yuletide Ministries donation. Need action.
I believe we received the letter regarding that. I believe there is a letter in everyone's package. Is that right?
That's correct.
So I did speak with, I don't think I gave a chance to speak. You have to speak about with Clerk Chris to manage that today. And he, my recommendation, in agreement with clerk's recommendation, is that we will send this letter to all the county employees who would like to give, that would like to donate to this program. It is a nonprofit program, we have the opportunity to do that. There's the names, county offices are all the letter. So does anybody have any public discussion? So does that need to be a directive or shall we move on with that?
No, we're just looking. I don't think it has to be a directive. I can just send it out.
Okay. Does the employee have a, a problem with the place if they want to donate? We have a number of churches and other organizations who do this type of thing at, at Christmas. And a lot of people donate through their churches. And since they sent us the letter, then I'm very comfortable with the courtesy of giving it to all the county employees, members of one of the jails. Okay? We'll just leave that in. There we go.
All right. Next item, no action needed. It's just an update on notification. Wayne Caringer Boulevard dedication will be on November the 18th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. at the high school. Southwestern Agent, Area Agency on Aging Board, reappointments and appointments, Connie Or, Ms. Connie Or, Mr. Lynn Cody, Mr. Jacob Mills, Mr. Dale Wiggins and Ms. Mary Griffin.
And I can say Dale can stay on even though he may not be a commissioner after November, after December. But he can stay on that board if he so chose.
Dale is a good representative and I would just like to ask you, Dale, would you like to give some?
Yeah, I would certainly. Yeah, I would certainly. Maybe quarterly or something like that. Yeah, I'd do that. Give me something to do now again.
Okay. Um, we do need a vote.
I'll make the, the four of us speak.
If there's a second, please.
Myself, right.
All in favor? And, uh, with, uh, Dale and Mary Griffin, uh, Mayfield, Lynn Cody and myself, thank you all for sharing that. And we are getting, I think we can attest to it, we are getting a good bit of activity on one of one or two levels for our aging people in this county. We're bringing in some, uh, money from programs that have been available for quite, quite a long time and, and seeing some good activity here, which I'm very, very pleased about. So it's a good, it's, it's, it's a calling and it's calling me a little loud, if that will be enough. Okay. Uh, let's see.
New or old, I, I have, there may be more, but I have one item. I just wanted to make the board aware and anybody else out there. Grand County will have some participation in the trunk or treat that's going to go on, on Main Street. Um, and that is on Monday on Halloween day at night, thirty on October. Um, I think it starts from about five-thirty in the afternoon. It probably goes until the ghouls come out or when they run out of candy, whichever comes first. That's the only new business I have.
I have one more thing I, I forgot to report on is our audit. Um, we, we had our auditors here a week before last for the full week. I was expecting two, they brought five, but they, they, uh, did a real good job. We're about in the whole process, about seventy-five to eighty percent complete. Um, I've got another couple of hard weeks of just tying up my loose ends. Um, and so I will continue to be a little antisocial for another couple of weeks.
Okay, they brought so many, I thought Becky had been coming by.
I was expecting five people, but it was fine. We, we, we got some good together this time. And I also have audit questionnaires for our board. I'll give those to you before close or in the break. Um, and you'll just fill them out, complete them and return them to me, but seal them up if there's any others.
Okay. Um, we have, and you take right and, uh, a reminder that we do go begin your, uh, questionnaire on the board. We will be going in closed session in GS one point three three eighteen.